All right, please join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lynda, would you take your roll, please?
Anthony Moranti.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Mary Ellen Finkler.
Here.
David Murphy.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
Oh, Neil Toman.
Neil the second. Approval of minutes from the March 24 meeting.
So I have a few, just little corrections, and some of them are just typos. So on page one, in the approval of minutes paragraph, it's at, on the third line, it says would apply only if lessons will be given.
Excuse me, there's contradiction here. You've got down on the agenda, March 24, approval of minutes, March 24, and we've got the April 21 minutes. Did you change the agenda correction, Lynda?
I'm okay.
Approval of minutes, March 24.
Oh, yes, it is. It's a mistake.
Okay, no problem. Sorry, Kim.
That's okay. So it's just a spelling error. It's lessons with an E and it should be lessons with an O. Sorry. Oh, yeah. I knew you would. I just have a couple more. So on page eight, at the bottom, it says, "An audience member noted that since the very first public hearing." I think that that was Dell Carlin, I'm not sure. I don't know if we need to name people by names, or if that...
Only, I think really only on a public hearing.
Because, the reason I say that is because he's part of the Landing Association.
Okay.
So as a representative, but I believe that's who it was.
All right, let's make, if you pointed out, let's make that correction.
And then, there's just one more. So on page 10, it's a, it says, "Ms. Connor noted that at one point the lot was used to store cars," and I think what I said was sell cars, but it probably didn't come through on the tape very well. And then the last one is on page 12. It's the one, two, three, four, five, sixth sentence or paragraph, it says, the second sentence is, "Mr. Gabber responded that the town would not adopt the law if the town wanted to hold the conservation easement," and I think that should be did not want. And that's it.
I didn't get that one.
Hmm?
I didn't get that.
Here, I'll just give you my notes, so that's easier.
Okay, got it. Anyone else? Corrections to the minutes? Entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of April 21?
Shall move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Two quickies before we get into the public hearing. They're at the bottom of the agenda, but I want to move them up to the top and get rid of them. The return of escrow. Synergy Gas Site Plan. Money's been escrow since 1989. Are we aware of any? I'll entertain a motion to return escrow to Synergy Gas.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second. Return of escrow for another one from 1989, Lee Kristofferson. Ooh, over in the post road. I don't know any, it's a bit, a while ago. Any, nothing. Motion to return the escrow?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Got them?
I'll just vote.
All in favor? Just trying to get through them.
I know.
Opposed? Thank you. Public hearing. Lynda, do you want to read the legal?
Shall I recuse myself at this point, or?
Okay.
I'm accusing myself, accusing myself.
Thrice, thrice, thrice recused.
Okay, planning board. The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 19, 2016, starting at 7:30 PM at the Butterfield Library, Morris Avenue, Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Garrison Station Plaza, Inc., Seven Station Road Garrison, New York, for a proposed mixed-use development comprising of two apartments, wine bar, and a restaurant for the former Guinan's Store and Garrison. The existing structure lies on a 6.674 acre parcel and will be renovated as part of this application. An onsite wastewater treatment facility is proposed, which will involve a surface discharge. The property lines along the easterly shore of the Hudson River and is within the 100-year flood boundary. The property is situated in a HM, Hamlet Mixed-Use Zoning District, in the town of Phillips Town. The tax map number is 60.17-1-7. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application plot map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Town Hall. And it's dated in New York, this 27th day of April, 2016. Anthony Moranti, Chairman.
Thank you. Glenn?
Glenn Watson from Beatty and Watson, representing Garrison Station Plaza, both the applicant and the owner in this project. All the planning board members, I'm sure the public remembers Guinan's. Was a pub, deli, on the very south end of Station Road or Garrison Station Plaza. The property is owned by Garrison Station Plaza. It's about 4,000 square feet of land on that six acres, the rest is underwater. The plan is basically to renovate the building, very minor changes, all set towards preserving the building, set towards respectful of the acquired significance that the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Places thought would be appropriate. We worked, we worked with them for some time during one of the last applications. As you know, it's been before you three different times. This time, the owner is undertaking the property. There are really very little changes to the, to the site. There is a sewage system, sewage treatment plant being put in the, in, towards the south end of the property, behind the main building. We walked there with your site visit and looked at that area. All of that will be underground except for the access, accessways, the manholes and stuff needed to get in, in treated. It will all be in a waterproof situation. There will be the addition of a small patio to serve, so service can be had outside during the summertime at the lower level. The front level will be, will be treated in such a manner so there can be a little bit of outside service there in the summer. There would be a restaurant in the building on the first floor and the lower floor. There will be two apartments, two, two-bedroom apartments above the first floor. That's opposed to, I think it was a three-bedroom, one of you was a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, three, no, three-bedroom and a one-bedroom apartment before. Regardless, this is essentially the same plan, two apartments above. The restaurant with some morning sales and the, in the main floor and on the lower floor, some outside dining will be established. The improvements to the front to make it more accessible, improvements to the access driveway, which we talked about out in the field, on the western side of the property. The parking will be on, along the edge of the railroad as, again, as previously shown, 18 spaces have been provided, in agreement with the owner of that property, who is also a partial owner of Garrison Station Plaza, that owns, that owns the actual land that you're under consideration tonight. All in all, it's, it's really a renovation, cleaning up, taking care of what would, if left much longer, would become a derelict building. And again, not very much different than we talked about several times in the past. We know we have some, there was, in your site visit, there was some concern by Mr. Zuckerman with regard to the turning at the, at the very end of the Station Plaza Road, and we'll work that out with Mr. Gaynor, make sure that's accessible, make sure that he approves whatever we do. Other than that, there's really not very much more to tell you. Be happy to answer any questions you may have if I'm able.
Okay. Ron, any preliminary comments?
I think the board's aware of the project. The site itself has been the subject of numerous site plan approvals in the past. This essentially represents a reapproval of an activity that was formally approved. Many of the approvals have lapsed from outside agencies, and those must be reinstated. But essentially, the board's seen this before and has acted on it before.
Anybody, anything from the board at this moment? Okay, Kim?
I just have one question, which is in the wetlands permit, there's a number two which has no text.
I returned it to Lynda today and asked the very same question.
Okay.
I actually have an answer to that.
The answer is?
The answer is. David leaves that blank in case an application needs something added other than the normal wording.
Sounds like David.
Okay.
I got a second one. Does that, it came through today. Is that the one with NA on it? One of them came through. I got two today, and one came through with a blank and one came through with an NA.
Both of mine came through blank.
So this gets signed by, well, it looks like it's already been signed by David. Yeah, I see the NA here.
Well, if he signed it, then I can assume...
Oh, that's, that was the money. Yeah, that was the money.
Yeah, that's the money. So, Steve, where are you?
Here.
Is that a good idea? We don't see these very often.
I think you'll begin to see them more often.
Well, if it's not filled in, there's no condition. I mean, you put it in after it's approved. As I said into the mic. Well, if it's not filled in, there's no condition, and he can't fill it in after it's approved. The final application fee, however, is a different matter. Sometimes you can't calculate the final fee until everything's been completed. So I don't have a problem with that being left because it's clear what's intended there. But to say that condition number two is nothing is really not a good idea.
Right. Not that we don't trust anybody, but you could write anything in there, like, "We don't need to have a sewage treatment package," for example. Right?
No, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right. But, I mean, he's the wetlands inspector.
Once he approves this, then we just fill in or cross out that space.
Well, that, you're not approving that.
We're not charged with this.
No, no, I know.
Your purview, not yours.
No, I understand that, but...
She put intentionally left blank. Put the Q on the D's.
Yeah, he could do that. He could do that, or just renumber, you know.
But...
Okay. Just open it to the audience. Oh, is there anything else from the board this time? The audience? Anyone? Ron?
No, I don't say.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Would you please come over and state your name?
I'm Ellen Yanatelli. I live on Station Road. Is it really Station Road?
Garrison Station Road.
What's the name of the road I live on? Because...
The name now is Garrison Landing Road.
Garrison.
Yeah. That's according to the post office, but you have Station Road, so somebody should figure that out. But I just wanted to say, I hope it, you approve it. It's a great idea. We don't really have any public establishments on our shore in this whole town, so this is the last chance, and I hope you do it.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? State your name, please.
Craig Waters, Garrison. I mean, I'm saying what doesn't really need to be said, but, you know, a lot of us are quite excited about the prospect of having an enterprise down on the water, and we really appreciate, you know, the support that the board has shown, and we're looking forward to it. I mean, it's good for all of the small businesses down there, and it's good for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you sign the paper, please? Because I couldn't hear your name.
Sure.
There's a pen and a paper up there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ron?
No, we have nothing else. If the words are disposed and upon the close of the public hearing...
Move to closing.
You do have draft resolutions for a negative secret declaration and also a site plan approval resolution, resolution for your consideration.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minus one. Negative declaration? Any comments on that, Ron?
No, that's what you've seen before. I think there was some discussion in the past as to whether this was a type one action or unlisted because it's in a historic district. But the, in prior applications, New York State Parks had already weighed in, given guidance to the board and the applicant as to what features they felt significant on the building, which the applicant has agreed to retain. So they've, they've served to accept the requirements of New York State Parks, and that's a part of this application.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's, you know, it's not 100, it's not 100% clear that this is an unlisted as, as a type one, as opposed to a type one action. But we've looked into the matter and the way that the secret regs are drafted. We think that since it's gone through one secret review already, and this is essentially a renewal of a permit, it's phrases of the application, that it is an unlisted action, you can go forward with a negative declaration.
Okay, thank you. We have a resolution that Ron's drawn up, adopting a negative dec. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ron has drafted a resolution to approve the application. Anything you want to say about that, Ron?
Again, we've included the standard conditions that relate to all the prior outside agency approvals that have to be renewed. We actually do have listed the requirement to get a town wetlands permit from the Conservation Board, and that obviously was delivered tonight.
Motion to adopt the resolution, approving? Anyone?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting thirsty thinking about it. Been having some good nights down there.
He's always with little children and then...
On the main agenda, item number two, John and Kimberly Sabatini, tenant 101 Dix Castle Road, consideration of negative secret declaration and final site plan approval. Ron, comments?
Again, the matter's been before the...
Sure. Sorry.
I really have nothing to add. If you're ready to approve it, I'm prepared, please.
Okay, Ron.
Sorry for that. The application's been before you for an extended period, I think approximately a year and a half. Board's been to the site on a few occasions. There've been various refinements made over time. The, most recently, the zoning board of appeals that granted, has granted the necessary variances to allow the project to, again, come before you for consideration of approval. And based on the direction of the board at the last meeting, we prepared a draft secret declarations and an approving resolution for you to consider.
Thank you. Glenn, anything?
No, we, I think, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think I have nothing much to add.
Dave, did you want to?
Yes, you know, this, this caught my eye, that on this, which is the existing conditions with environmental constraints, it gives a calculation of existing impervious surface, the area of the house footprint, 100 linear feet of driveway, and it...
Dave, the mic's near you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so it adds those up, and then you got a variance to, to go farther with that, yes? And then, on the calculation of proposed impervious surface, it gives the area of existing impervious surface to add to, it gives the area of the addition, the area of retaining walls, and comes up with a number that gives us 14.8% of impervious surface coverage that was what was approved by the ZBA, right? Okay, so then, this is, this is where I was having a problem, is that that whole asphalt driveway proposed that goes from the pool does not count.
That's right.
And so, and, and I understand that that's like an idea about the way the statute works, which says, shall I read that?
Sure, you want to have him here? You got it.
I got it. That's easier. The statute says, impervious surface coverage, the ratio, ratio between impervious surface and a total land area of a lot of wetlands, water, no, is that, is that the right one?
That's the one.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's down at the bottom. Sorry, I don't have to read all of this. As percentage of land covered by impervious surfaces, that's the end of that sentence I didn't have to read. For purposes of calculating impervious surface coverage, no more than 100 feet of a driveway or access road shall be counted. The remainder of a driveway or access road shall be excluded from both the total land area and impervious surface calculations. So my question here is, does that really mean that the whole new driveway that's going to be asphalt and therefore impervious surface doesn't count in this calculation?
Well, I believe so. We had to, I had somebody check that. Ron asked me a question about that last night about 10 o'clock, I think it was. But we, I had, I had our engineer check this, that today, we believe our calculation is correct, and we don't believe we need to count past 100 feet. And he said he counted that.
So, but, but what that implies, and this may be a problem with the statute, I don't know, but what that implies is that you could put five driveways up, and it wouldn't cost you anything in terms of impervious surface, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's backwards, to tell you the truth. I could see, to be perfectly frank, I could see an exemption for the first 100 feet because you need a driveway.
Right.
But then, because somebody decides they're going to build a highway half mile back into the woods and say none of that counts, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But that's what the law says.
You know, I looked, I looked at, I looked at the thing that I just read. I also looked in the code about the definition, for the definition of a driveway, and they never said a driveway or driveways. You know, it's all used in the singular. So I guess what, you know, somebody will, should tell me what they think about this, or we should have a consult or something like that, but it doesn't, on the face of it, it seems strange to me.
It seems strange, I, I, I see your point. I see your point exactly. I mean, you can look at it from the point of view of that, with the A being referred to one drive, one driveway in particular, but I can also say, this is a driveway, and this is a driveway. And it's, it's unclear.
Right.
I understand that.
But that's a different driveway. I, we don't need to get totally into this, but...
It's a real semantic issue, right.
You know, I just thought we should get it out there because it seemed like it was worth noting.
I, I don't, in fact, I just agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
So, so, Steve, would this be something that we might want to ask the town board to think about?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a broad provision. I mean, it looks almost like they want to, they want to carve the amount of driveway over 100 feet out of total lot area in addition to out of impervious surface. But, you know, if you have multiple driveways, how do you measure that? Is it only the first 100 feet of the first one? Is it, if you have five, it's the first 100 feet of all five of them? It's not, not real clear in, in the code. So it's something that the, the board might want to look at, think about, talk with its planner about, make a decision on. It's, it's a very nuanced point, frankly. I don't think it's the kind of thing you're going to go to the town board members and they're going to be like, wow, that's, that's something we got to jump on right away. They're going to really need to...
How many times have we run into this?
Think the thing through, you know?
And the reality of it is that in most instances, if it was on a town, county, or state road, you'd only be permitted one driveway. I've had this discussion with Dave when the question was raised. This is a private road, so not even the town highway superintendent has jurisdiction on the siding of the driveways. So this is a very unique circumstance, and it's, you know, that provision of code is contrary to common sense, but it's in your code.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I know there's a place in town where there's several, I got this, several homes off of 301 with very long driveways, well over 100 feet. But 301's a state highway. How would you, if somebody came in tomorrow, wanted to build another house on this lot, I don't think there's any room for another house, but for instance, they wanted to come in, they, to get to their houses way in the back, they need 300 feet of driveway. So in this, on this, under this ordinance, they could do it?
Well, you understand a private road can be as long as you want it, as far as that goes, and whether it's a private road or driveway, it's exempted under this. The first 100 feet, it doesn't matter. The only time that this, to add another layer of, you know, making this kind of a, a nitsy point, the only times it's going to be an issue is when there's an issue about impervious surface coverage. If you have a big enough lot, I mean, it really isn't a big deal whether it's counted or not.
So we're talking percentage of impervious surface?
Exactly. That's, that's the thing. So if you have a lot that's big enough that it's not an issue, that's one thing. If you have a lot that's big, but you paved an awfully lot of driveway, it might be an issue.
Okay.
And this is one of those rare instances where, you know, somebody's going to, like you, take a look at it and be like, hey, wait a minute, that doesn't seem to make sense.
Okay.
But that's the way the code's written, so...
And it does, you know, I think I mentioned this before, but the other thing that happened with this particular lot is that the, the, the base number from what, that you use as the divisor is, is very low because you subtract all of the land over 20%. So we had a seven acre lot that came down to a very small amount of buildable area from that formula. And that also theoretically, under today's circumstance, that won't happen very often.
Well, I think actually that kind of thing is more likely to happen over time because most of the lots that are easy to build on are taken now, you know? And we're just going to get more and more of these very steep and...
Well, that, where it'll happen is on those few lots that are no, that are already existing and, and are not built upon. It shouldn't happen because when you do it, if, on a subdivision, because when you do a subdivision, those calculations are supposed to be made, and those allowances are supposed to be proven. So it would become before you, and it would reduce the number of lots in a subdivision as opposed to creating lots where you'd have that problem.
But the building inspector would still run across it. It might not come to us, but it could be something, the building, when it's an individual house, the building, so, you know.
It will be a very thorough building inspector that will catch that.
Right. To help building inspector as well, it will sort that out.
No, you're absolutely right. It would, but there's nothing talismanic about impervious surface. The reason that you have a limitation on the amount of impervious surface allowed is you don't want to have drainage problems. I mean, that's the main reason for it. And if you have a situation... And, um, if you have a situation where somebody doesn't meet the impervious surface coverage, what happens is, they're going to go to the zoning board, and they're going to ask for a variance. And the zoning board's going to take a look at it and determine if exceeding the amount of allowed impervious surface is going to result in environmental problems, like problems with drainage or surface water quality, or whatever it might be. If the answer is that it's not going to be a problem, they're probably going to get their variance. I mean, if there's no harm to it and it's a benefit to them. Here, you've gone through secret review, you know that there's not going to be any adverse environmental impacts, no, no drainage issues, no, nothing else, you know, Ron's looked at all that, you've, you've gone through your secret review on it. So, in situations like this, whether he makes the, um, impervious surface coverage or not, the only difference is, does he go to the ZBA and have to get a variance and then come back or not? I mean, I guess there might be a rare instance where the lot's just too small and the drainage problems are too great, he'd wind up with flooding in the road or something like that, and you'd have to, you'd have to refuse it. But, you know, most of the time, I think people are going to be able to work around that.
I mean, you're actually supposed to be paying attention to stormwater management.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm sure you did on this.
You know, all kinds of stuff that, it isn't just flooding, it's what the flood carries with it, you know, that causes the problem.
Yeah, and onto other people's property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, manatees.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments, folks? We have a, uh, resolution that Ron's drawn up to adopt a negative declaration, seeker. Motion to that effect? Anyone?
No move.
Second?
I'll second.
Peter, second.
Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now we have a, uh, resolution adopting the application. Ron, any comment on that?
No, again, it, it follows the typical format the board utilizes and standard conditions that, uh, the board has seen before.
Um, adopt a, motion to adopt a resolution? Anyone?
So.
Mary Ellen, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. site plan for construction of a new building. Where's my stuff? Do you have, do you have any extra on this? I don't know where my stuff is. No. The, uh, ESP Kerr. Just a look at. Okay. Remind me to get it back here. Okay. Okay. Well, for those of you who haven't heard, we got our zoning change. It was passed at the town board meeting on first Thursday of May. So, at this point, we have entered into a developer's agreement with a lot of stipulations that's been recorded and that's been delivered. I'm, actually, I'm going to correct myself. It's been signed and delivered, I don't know for a fact that it's been recorded yet, but it's been delivered to the town. That is an agreement between the developer and the town that if the zoning is adopted, they will do certain things. Merge the lots, do a conservation easement, all of those, all of those nineteen conditions that were, uh, put on the table when we discussed the zoning change with the town. So that change has happened. And I'm here for, for two reasons. My primary reason, and, and my cover letter, was to ask you to approve the sub, the subdivision, which is actually an unsubdivision in that it takes three parcels and makes them into two, and, which would allow us to file the map, have this back lot be separate from the front lot, and merge the deeds into this single lot for the, for the site that will be developed commercially. Conservation easement, I talked about, prevents, even though this land is, the land on the second lot, the rear lot, is now highway commercial, um, it will be restricted from commercial development by deed, and the town will benefit from, from that, it will be a beneficiary of that deed. There are still very few, there are really very few things to iron out. We're, we're still waiting on a, on a, on a couple of fee amounts in terms of, uh, funding the baseline study for the conservation easement and funding the first, the, the, funding the first two, um, inspections after, after the conservation easement is in, and then the, and then making a, a deposit that will generate enough money to fund the annual, um, inspections, generate enough return to, 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 uh, fund those inspections.
Just to interpret.
The, the agreement was, there's, there's an initial baseline documentation, where basically they go out and see what conditions are there. The recommendation was, in the first year, there'd be two inspections, and then there'd be annual spec, inspections thereafter forever. So, the owner has agreed to put up the money for those first three things, the inspect, the two inspections and the baseline study. And then, there will be a deposit made so that it can be put in an interest-bearing account of some sort, or invested, so that it will generate the, the, the rest of the, the money on an annual basis to fund the inspections into the future, which is a typical, typical thing in a conservation easement.
Who controls that account?
Town.
This will be the first conservation easement that the town will hold?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
It's a first.
Okay. Um, Ron, this is a, could you work our way through? This is a bit convoluted. Now that we've got the zoning, um, approval, we're working for a resolution approval of the subdivision, um, where's our, where's our next step on this?
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Steve, because he's been, he's been shepherding it from the town side.
All right, well, you've, you've taken this application, um, up through the public hearing, you've made all the referrals on it, then you didn't take action because you had to wait for the zoning change. The zoning change was contingent on the developer's agreement, which among other things includes within it an obligation on the part of the property owner to provide the town with a conservation easement. I believe conservation easement's referenced in a note on the plans as well.
I'm sure it is.
So, um, in addition to, um, subdivision, we're talking about amended site plan for the commercial development, here, I think.
This commercial development is, is this.
Yes, yes, and it ends in a fence back there.
The fence ends, fence, it's here.
Okay. So, um, you have, at this point, um, three things left for this board to do. The, the town board has to, to clean up the issue of the, the conservation easement yet. Um, although you're aware of the terms of that, we've gone over that at, at some length and, and what it requires, and, and all, and I think the board was satisfied with, with the terms of it, and I know the town board was. So you need to make your secret determination, you need to grant site plan, well, subdivision approval, and site, and amended site plan approval. And those are the three things that need to be done. If the board's satisfied with the plans, and I mean, we've gone over them at some length, and you reported back to the town board that you were, I think the only next step to be done is to direct that, uh, secret resolution, subdivision, and site plan be prepared. Then once those things are done, their obligations under the developer's agreement will kick in, and hopefully the matter resolves itself at that point.
So, oh, go ahead, Kim, go ahead. So we're going to direct Ron to draw these resolutions for the June meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't see how you can approve it now without them before you. I mean, I, much as the applicant would like to move forward, I, I, I just think that's the next step.
Those three items here that have to be done between, Kim.
I, is it, is the, um, did the right-of-way change over the neighboring property? Sorry. Did the right-of-way change over the neighboring property? Because it looks like the line on your map is the same.
That has not, to my knowledge, that has not happened, but that is one of the element, one of the conditions of the, of the developer's agreement.
That was one of the nineteen, was it not?
Right. The way that it works is, the developer's agreement has been executed, and it gets recorded with the county. And what the developer's agreement says is, if they get the zoning change, and if they get the approvals they've sought from this board, then they have to do various things, such as give the conservation easement, extinguish one easement altogether, I think, or partially at least, and...
That's this easement on Marigan's property.
Right.
And, and there's been, there's been discussions with them, there's been agreement to, to, regardless of whether there's agreement, we've got an obligation to, to extinguish it. There is a question, it's not in the deeds, it's just my very peculiar reading of, that there, there could be a claim for an easement there, because there's a map on file, and we're going to have, ask the Americans to extinguish that. They're under no obligation to do that, but we have had discussions with them. This easement and right-of-way that benefits, um, what's there? Debo, that benefits Debo, goes all the way back here, and in fact, they built their studio within the easement and right-of-way. So what we are going to do, what we've agreed to do is give up, th, this is the same line I was pointing to, we're going to take that line, extinguish that, this part of the easement up to this point, which allows us access to this lot, and it allows for the construction of a turnaround, should that ever be required by one of the site plans or anything like that. So this easement is being given up, this easement is being given up, um, this one, except for the area for the turnaround. And, um, and then we're also obligated to join the homeowners association that they have established. We've actually rewritten it to, to make it more, um, more restrictive than it would be on the existing easement, it would not be as restrictive, or the existing homeowner's agreement would not be as restrictive as, as we made it, in that the homeowner's agreement only calls for maintenance up to this point and nothing beyond. We've enlarged the area to include this area, and I will say, in fact, that they have been, the Kerr's, Kerr's have been participating in it. It's a volunteer method. This spring, they went out and graded the driveway and helped them get the driveway back up in shape, as the, you know, happens, happens all those roads in the springtime. So, again, we're under an obligation to do it, and we've been working with the neighbors to, to show good faith at this point. Refresh my memory, how many neighbors are there that are involved? It's two others? Two. The Marigans, here. Yeah. And the Debo's back here. Okay. And that's, that's, that's it. This is a, this is the now town park area. This is the auto body shop, which doesn't use the road. They may have a right-of-way, but they don't use it. Okay.
So, as my, in my role as, um, spell check, um, in your road maintenance agreement, I just want to point out that Debo has two Bs.
Oh, I got it spelled all different ways.
It's two Bs, two Ls.
Right, okay.
That's my only superpower.
Thank you, Kim. We ask you, Ron, to prepare all these in one motion, if you need to make...
Sure, we could do that. I, I actually have not looked, uh, in any depth of the subdivision plat and the site plan in a very long time, so I, within the intervening month, I'll sit with the design engineer, and we'll go through all those details, just to be sure they're clean.
Okay. So, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to, for Ron, or planner, to, to have a seeker, uh, declaration, subdivision approval, and a, uh, site plan approval. Be three separate documents. Do I have a motion to that effect?
No move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ron, you're going to be busy. Gentlemen, New Business, Old Span LLC, uh, 2700 New York State Route Nine, review of proposed lot line adjustment involving more than ten percent of the smaller parcel. Go ahead. Okay, for those of you who remember, oh, yeah. Of course. This is the CF diversified property, and the property now owned by Old Span. Couple of years ago, we were before you for approval of a subdivision of, to construct a five acre parcel around the former Cybercon building. You probably all know that building is being restored, refurbished, and a significant addition is being added on to it. That's, that's on the, that's ongoing now. Essentially, after the site plan and, and the subdivision was approved and filed, the Old Span wanted some additional land, and they purchased just under ten percent of their lot to increase it by approximately ten percent, which is the one freebie they get out of the, out of the, um, subdivision regulations. And, so they decided that that wasn't quite enough, they wanted to add another little bit here, and that took them over the ten percent. So we're here to ask you for that, ask you to approve that. I made a, I don't have, didn't have Mary Rice available, who knows how to use a crayon. So you have to deal with me, my doing. They have coloring book clubs now, Glenn. Glenn, so they have coloring book clubs now? I'll bet. I could use one, too. So, if you look at the first page, that's what you approved. If you go to the second page, the green area is what was added on using the ten percent rule. And if you go to the third page, you'll see in red what we're at, the additional area that we're asking you to approve now. But what that will make is that, they'll make this lot go through from road to private road, there's no building intended, it's simply intended to enlarge the property so that they'll have more space around their building. Perhaps they'll be able to plant, do some planting back there, but essentially, it's, it's not intended for anything other than to provide more space and room around the building. That's my whole story.
So what's the percentages, then? So it's not ten percent, it's what?
Well, it's, it's about the same, actually. It's, it's about ten percent. It's, it's going to take it, it's going to take it from, where'd I put that?
It's five point nine nine eight.
Yeah, it's going five point nine nine eight, so it's ten percent.
I'm, then I'm confused. If it's not ten percent, then why are we talking, Ron?
You can only do the ten percent once.
Oh, oh, oh.
The second time, you can't, you can't...
So I'm asking, so what?
Oh, if I could do ten percent each time, I'd never be here.
No, but then, but then, but then I'm, I guess I'm asking, from the beginning, what the, what is the number, then? It's in...
It started out with five acres that was approved. We added five tenths of an acre under the ten percent rule. We're now adding another five tenths of an acre.
It's five tenths of an acre, okay, so five tenths off, so off the whole thing.
Five tenths is coming off of this large lot.
Which is...
And being added to the small lot.
Right, five tenths is being added, and what's the small lot, uh, total acreage, then?
It will be six. It started out as five, it will be six.
Sir, I'm just trying to figure, if you, we start from the beginning, and they bought these with the two...
Twenty percent.
Thank you, that's what I'm just trying to get, thank you, it's twenty percent, okay.
We're doing ten percent at a time, but the second ten trips, trips them into...
That's what I'm trying to say, so we're doing twenty, it's effectively a twenty...
The board could, at this initial meeting, so classified as such to let them go to final plot stage. There's also a, I don't know if the applicant's formally made a request, but you may wish to consider waivers to the standard requirement for technical information on the plan, be it topography and various other things. They're not proposing any new construction, so I think you'd be disposed to grant the waivers if requested. We've got some technical things that we'd like the applicant to add to the plan, just technical things to do. And lastly, the project requires a referral to Putnam County Planning under 239 GML.
Okay. Steve, anything?
Well, you have to declare yourself lead agency for purposes of secret review. This is an unlisted action. You know, your standard procedure is to schedule a site plan and then I would expect, you know, you'd be in a position, since this is existing site and I think it's fairly well-known, to schedule for a public hearing next month. I mean, unless you want to put that off and wait, see what you find out at the site visit, but I mean, you know, you know the site, they've been here before.
Okay, we have to, let's take this one at a time. We'll have to refer to Putnam County Department of Planning.
Right.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Does he need a motion for this?
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Site walk, do we, you got your calendar handy?
Yeah, with respect to this, there's no new construction, they're only hating area around the, around the building.
Anybody not been there?
I've been there a couple of times, but what type of guarantee do you have about this piece of property that it won't be developed or something like that?
It falls under the current site, the existing site plan.
Site plan.
That little parcel that they're adding?
They're adding it to be part of one, the one site.
Yeah, one site.
Again, if they propose any, any construction on that site, it's in a, it's a commercial site plan, it would require new approval from you.
Does that include a driveway?
Doesn't include a driveway. I would say any improvements would.
There's no improvements, so he says.
No, he's not, and I'm saying, if later they propose.
Oh, later, yes, no, if they want to put anything else, then they have to come back. They're not putting anything in now, they're just changing lot line.
Is there any reason we need to do a site walk, Dave? Anybody? Mary Ellen? Okay.
I have, sorry. Just a question. So this, at this moment, that, those two little parcels there, they, do they provide reasonable access to that whole property or is?
Well, it could be, you could construct access from down up there, but the access is out on Route 9.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I mean, like, at this moment, can people drive over there and, I mean, could they drive in the back of that or bring a truck in there or something like that?
They probably could bring a, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I know that topographically, it's certainly possible and that it looks like somebody used to, but Fadden used to live up here and work down here and he probably didn't walk to work because it's quite a hike. So I imagine he, I imagine he has, I imagine that comes from him going down there and working his way into the property.
But if you're going to use it a lot, you'd have to, you'd have to.
You have to build a driveway.
You have to build a driveway and get a board and all that.
And presumably, since it's a private road, you'd have to get the other people on the private road to agree to your using it.
And I don't know that that's the case. I think that that, I think that there would be an implied easement over this. But that's just my opinion.
So the reason for us to go look at it would be if there's something back there like flatlands, which I don't think there are.
No.
Flatlands on the front edge. And they go to the north.
Right.
But there is reason to have a public hearing.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, it's a subdivision, you're required to have a public hearing.
Well, a motion to declare planning board lead agency?
Let me declare ourselves as lead agency?
Second. All in favor? So I, I'm just assuming that we're going to skip the site walk unless anybody's got a great desire to. Okay. Motion to schedule a public hearing for June.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any else we should know about this? Thank you. Okay. And is there anything else we have? Okay. Yeah, yes. Motion to adjourn? Second?
Chair.
Yes.
Can you take a public comment?
Regarding what, Andy?
Regarding me.
Oh.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, yes.
My last planning board meeting after 12 years of near consistent, I think I've been to more planning board meetings in this town than anybody sitting at this table. So I just want to say it's been a, anybody, anybody sitting at this table, as I said. I remember when this planning board, the planning board chair and the planning board planner were yelling at people in the audience and it's great to see such a professional board that exists now, both in terms of membership and the council, so just want to congratulate you on that and the fine sort of service that you're doing to the town and thank you for your service to this town because this town would be far worse without your service and I appreciate it and appreciated working with you. And I hope that with the significant project coming up, Hudson Islands Reserve, that you show the proper amount of attention and I know you will, given the people that are here. So good luck in that and I look forward to reading about what happens to it from the mountains of North Carolina. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Andy, if you change your mind and want to come back, we'd welcome you back.
No, I don't think so, but thanks anyways.
I want to tell you just on a record, we appreciate your advice over the years and even though it took us about three years to get your classes going for us on environmental, we appreciate it. Thank you. Now, this, again, motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I want to tell you just on a record, we appreciate your advice over the years and even though it took us about three years to get your classes going for us on environmental, we appreciate it. Thank you. Now, this, again, motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1676.53]